I call to order the virtual study session of Lakewood City Council. Public comment on this evening's topic of the strategic housing plan. You can join the meeting at phone number seven two zero seven zero seven two six nine nine. And enter webinar ID eight three six two zero eight two eight zero nine eight. Press pound after entering the webinar ID and then press pound again once more to join the meeting. When we get to the point in public comments, you'll ultimately press star nine to request to speak and then we'll be prompted when to speak. And we'll give directions to unmute at that time. Will the Kirk please call the role?
Mayor Strong.
Here.
Counselors over. Mia Guerrero.
Yes.
Stuart.
Here.
Ryan.
Yes.
LeBure.
Here.
Sharazai.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
And Sinks. I thought I saw, oh yeah. We see, thanks counselor. All right, Mary, you have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And with that, I will go ahead and hand it off to Mr. Travis Parker, Travis Parker, our planning director. And we will kick off the presentation from there.
Good evening. Can you hear me now? Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excited to be with you tonight for this discussion of the strategic housing plan. Presentation tonight is going to be given by our, partly by our Housing and Neighborhood Support Supervisor, Amy Deeknicker, who will be joined by members of the consultant team, including Andrew Ratchford and Aaron Gruen. So I will turn it over to Amy to start the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Travis. My name is Amy Deeknicker. I work in the Comprehensive Planning and Research Division within the city of Lakewood's planning department. As Travis said, I am here tonight to present with our consultant team the strategic housing plan. Let me just go ahead and bring up the presentation. Sorry, does everyone see the the presentation on the screen?
Yes.
Good job. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to present the key findings and recommendations and action steps outlined in the draft document. After working with the Housing Policy Commission over the past few months, gathering their input, as well as the feedback we received from the public during our month of June, when we posted the draft plan, we are pleased to present to the entire city council, answer questions and get your feedback prior to advancing the plan towards city council adoption in 2024. So I'm just going to begin with the project timeline. The project officially kicked off in October of last year with the selection of Gruen, Gruen and Associates as the project consultant team. Soon after, they began gathering data, complete the housing and economic analysis. And that was followed by seven months of community engagement with residents, housing providers, subject matter experts, historically underrepresented populations, and our housing policy commission. Finally, we began drafting the strategies and developing the plan based on the community needs, data and resident and stakeholder input that we received through our community engagement. Tonight, we're here to present the plan, gather your feedback and finalize the draft for adoption. Our community engagement began late 2022 with one-on-one interviews with local subject matter experts, including private and nonprofit housing providers, supportive service agencies and special populations. The broader public outreach phase of the project began in early February with the launch of the project website, which engaged 5,000 visitors to the page. The webpage also featured a link to the Community Housing Survey, which was developed to gather resident input on their individual views on housing needs and solutions. The survey was available February 1st through March 6th and heavily promoted during the time, beginning with postcards mailed directly to all registered neighborhood organizations. The project website and survey link included in February's Looking at Lakewood newsletter, which was mailed to all Lakewood residents. And we promoted the survey on message boards throughout the rec centers, social media posts. We did hard copies of the survey in English and Spanish. And those were provided to our housing authority and nonprofit partners. And staff attended in-person board meetings and community association meetings that were held during the survey promotion period. The survey had over 500 responses, making it one of the highest participation rates we've seen in the planning department. Community engagement continued with an open house and housing resource fair in early April, which was heavily promoted through the same channels as the survey, with the exception of the Looking at Lakewood meeting. To reach our residents that aren't often represented, we contracted with Spanish interpreters and community connectors to engage the community, invite them to the open house. We had a great turnout with over 65 attendees who signed in. The purpose of the open house was to share with the public some of the housing conditions and needs from the housing analysis, provide the results of the community survey and get additional input on some early strategy ideas. In June, we posted the first draft of the plan for the community feedback. The input we received was very helpful. We then worked closely with our Housing Policy Commission over the months of June and July to revise and clarify the plan and provide a response to the community feedback that we received. We are with you again tonight, presenting our final draft for your input before progressing the plan forward. The purpose of this plan is to improve the housing situation in Lakewood by removing barriers and creating solutions to increase affordable housing options for Lakewood residents. After the completion of a housing analysis and stakeholder and community engagement, strategies and action steps were created to reflect the data and input received. This plan will not change zoning, allocate funding or create new programs. Instead, this plan provides robust data and recommended strategies and action steps that are within the city's control and appropriate for Lakewood. The plan is intended to help guide city council in creating housing policy over the next five to 10 years. Further research and discussion will be necessary to determine priorities and rich strategies should be explored further for implementation. I am now going to hand it over to Andrew Ratchford with Gruen, Gruen and Associates to walk through some of the data, the proposed strategies and action steps.
Thanks, Amy. Before we get into the recommendations, we've got a couple of slides. Reviewing a few key findings that I think helped to kind of explain what's in the strategic plan recommendations and why we're proposing them. With respect to for sale housing market conditions in Lakewood, the median single-family home price has increased by roughly 80% between 2015 and 2022. Currently today, most for sale housing units in the community will sell for around $400 a square foot. And while single-family market conditions have softened a little bit over the past year, existing units have become scarcer and housing prices remain elevated well above levels witnessed just a couple of years ago. The rental market in Lakewood is characterized by persistently low vacancy and high rates of rent escalation or rent growth. So the rental market has remained well occupied despite considerable new construction over the past several years, which is a pretty good indication that new apartment developments are serving unmet housing needs rather than just siphoning renters from existing units in Lakewood. Next slide. Housing affordability conditions for homeowners have remained relatively stable over the long term. The cost burden rate, which is the percentage of households spending more than 30%, 30% of their income on housing for owners in Lakewood has increased by only one percentage point from around 21% back in 2000 to 22% as of 2021. About 60% of all homeowners in Lakewood still have housing expenses that are less than 20% of their pre-tax income. The cost burden rate for renters, however, increased significantly from about 39% of all renters back in 2000 to upwards of 58% of renters as of 2021. The increase in cost burden renters essentially relates to both long-term rent increases and also stagnation in household incomes among renter households. This kind of helps explain why, at least according to the survey that we conducted of Lakewood residents, that more than 42% of renters are either somewhat or very unsatisfied with their current housing situation, which compares to less than 9% of homeowners who are unsatisfied. Next slide, Amy. Lakewood experiences a large deficit of both ownership and rental units at deeply affordable prices. Many existing homeowners would be challenged to purchase their same homes again if they're doing it today under the current interest rate environment. Using the same 30% of income standard that we're using to describe cost burden households. Lakewood contains an estimated 13,000 renters who can't afford any more than $1,250 a month in gross rent. Meanwhile, the existing supply of rental units priced below this threshold is about 6,500 units. So the difference or the gap is a deficit of around 7,000 rental units that are affordable to this lowest income bracket. To simply keep pace with projected population and employment growth within Jefferson County, we've estimated that Lakewood will need to add at least 5,800 housing units over the next 10 years. About 70% of the projected future need relates to workforce housing. Other housing needs will primarily relate to older adult households who have changing preferences or needs as the age and so forth. About 40% of the overall need is associated with income levels that are below 80% of the area median income. Existing relatively lower-priced housing inventory is going to be needed to meet these future needs. This indicates the importance of creating new market rate housing for those who can afford it on one hand. So as to essentially free up existing lower-priced housing stock as the community continues to grow and change. Next slide. Given the significant increases we've seen in construction costs and interest rates, most new housing developments today are really only marginally feasible, even if all of the units are sold or rented at prevailing market housing prices. So if an inclusionary housing requirement was to be applied to all future construction in Lakewood, for example, requiring 10 or 20% of the units to be set aside at below-market affordable prices, a lot of these housing developments in Lakewood will become financially infeasible. So if the city wants to encourage for-profit private housing developers to create affordable units of new projects, it's likely going to need to provide an offsetting source of either subsidies or incentives. The least costly option is likely to be something on the magnitude of a 5% set aside that would be affordable to 60% of the area median income. Next slide. The results of the housing survey indicated that the inability to afford the down payment on a home purchase and worries that rents will escalate to unaffordable amounts were the two most frequently cited concerns or challenges about housing in Lakewood. Almost 20% of respondents also indicated that they're already struggling to make current rent or mortgage payments. Next slide. About half of all survey respondents indicate they support potential zoning strategies that could encourage more affordable housing options. Another half of respondents indicated they support revisions to the zoning code to encourage things like accessory dwelling units on a greater number of single-family lots. When respondents were asked a similar zoning type question, again, about half of respondents would support allowing attached units on properties that right now are only zoned for detached and single-family homes. Next slide. About 41% of the survey respondents indicated support for a dedicated local tax that could fund affordable housing in Lakewood. The levels of support and opposition to this local tax tended to vary by length of tenure in the community. So longer-term homeowners tend to not support it, while newer residents do support it, which in some ways makes sense. People who have been more active in the housing market recently have a different perspective. Next slide here, we're going to get into a review of what's in the proposed strategic plan. And it's essentially organized around four broad strategies here, one through four. And then each strategy is supported by a series of action items and implementation steps. So let's move to strategy number one here. Local funding support and development incentives can encourage housing production that won't otherwise occur. And it can also help to obtain federal and state dollars that are available for affordable housing. So strategy number one is kind of bracketed around the idea that Lakewood can identify and deploy financial resources that would be used to fund incentives and also increase the internal capacity to support affordable housing creation or preservation. So to do this, Lakewood can expand internal staff resources such as related to expedited review of housing proposals and also to assist in policy formation and evaluating the use of incentives or pursuing funding from other state or federal sources. The plan also recommends creating a dedicated source of funding that could facilitate the development of affordable units, the preservation of affordable units, and to better fund ongoing housing staff and resources. The survey I mentioned before tested reactions to some of the funding options. And maybe not surprisingly, the most popular option was to basically raise the hotel tax. Because inclusionary zoning or mandates to provide housing at below-market prices is likely to render most new housing construction infeasible, we're not recommending a mandatory inclusionary zoning program for Lakewood. But if the city is willing to provide financial incentives to offset the costs of providing those below-market units in new construction projects, a voluntary-type program could be created to encourage private developments to include affordable units that are priced below market. Next slide. Typically, the most cost-effective way to create more affordable housing is to encourage the development of market-responsive housing at all income levels. So just as the occasional overbuilding or oversupply of office space or retail space will result in lower rents for tenants of that space, the occasional overbuilding of housing can do the same essentially by helping to reduce prices for the buyers and the renters, the consumers of housing. So to build affordable housing or to preserve affordable housing will require the provision of financial and non-financial incentives. Examples of incentives to implement include waiting fees or otherwise assisting with public infrastructure costs, providing for an expedited review or fast-track permit process for new housing developments, modifying regulations that would permit more units on a given lot or even smaller units as part of this potential program to kind of increase and diversify the housing stock in Lakewood. Zoning changes and other actions can lead to greater adoption of ADUs, accessory dwelling units, which in some ways is kind of a modest way to increase density and improve less expensive housing options for smaller-sized households or older-age households without requiring more land. As far as temporary shelter requirements or needs go, the municipal code and the building code and the zoning ordinance all kind of interact to varying degrees to discourage non-traditional housing options. So the plan is really recommending, I think, reasonable amendments that would permit institutional facilities, you know, churches or municipal buildings to better accommodate these kinds of temporary housing needs. I think also part of this strategy is to support the conversion of obsolete or no longer competitive non-residential land uses to housing and to evaluate whether any municipal or institutional property owners such as school districts have underutilized or surplus property that the city could work collaboratively to appropriate for future housing uses. Next slide, number three. We think you should anticipate an increase in needs and requests for permits to remodel homes that will facilitate aging in place as Lakewood gets older, which is certainly happening already. Commensurate need for condominium-type services and existing or new single-family housing developments. And also an increase in multifamily housing with services that are geared to the very need older-age adults. So part of the plan is recommending that the city explore emerging services, including home sharing programs, and identify ways the city can lend support or even credibility to providers of these services. And then also to kind of double down on the support for programs and organizations that are already assisting older adults with home renovations and meeting their housing needs. The city should also explore ways to increase, as I mentioned earlier, the number one cited challenge is a down payment, but ways to increase affordable homeownership opportunities, such as an employer-assisted housing fund and increasing contributions to pre-existing down payment programs and perhaps exploring collaborations or partnerships with nonprofit groups in metro Denver that develop housing under a land trust model. We know the city has already been exploring and planning for the development of a centralized housing navigation center. So part of strategy three is basically recommending that you double down and continue these efforts to better meet sheltering and supportive housing needs in Lakewood. Let's get on to number four here, the last one. Keeping households stably housed, which is important, typically more economic to do that than it is to create new housing for these households. This can be assisted by maximizing available HCVs, housing choice vouchers, and also exploring ways to encourage a greater number of landlords to accept the vouchers that you have. Another way is to support the existing eviction prevention programs. And one option to do this is to work with local service and housing providers that already do rental assistance and eviction prevention, such as the Action Center. But to do so is likely to require more financial commitment on behalf of the city. There are a variety of adopted or pending bills that relate to limiting displacement essentially within mobile home parks. So the plan is essentially recommending that staff continue to track and assess as part of identifying how best to prevent displacement where state and federal dollars can be used to do this. And then lastly, even when there's affordable housing units or resources available, some non-English-speaking residents will encounter linguistic barriers and an even greater number might struggle with kind of a limited knowledge or familiarity with existing programs. So minimizing language barriers with multilingual informational campaigns about what's available and also proactively addressing fears in the community about public charge or deportation. If they elect to seek assistance, I think would be a wise strategy to pursue as it relates to keeping existing households stably housed. I'm going to turn it back to Amy and she's going to. I'm going to turn it back to Amy and she's gonna um walk us through some of the next steps, I think.
Thank you Andrew. Um, so the next step includes uh. Moving the plan forward for city council adoption. Um, and then followed by a study session with city council to provide an educational overview.
I can barely hear that. Can I? I don't know if anybody else can?
Um. Okay, um. Our next steps include um plan forwarding. Um, followed by a study session, council to provide an educational overview of the strategic housing plan. And begin discussions on plan.
I'm sorry, I can't hear either.
Yeah, I'm having trouble.
Your volume's still going out.
Geez, I'm not sure. Can you hear, can you hear me now at all?
Yeah, maybe if you stay really close to the computer.
Amy, do you have another mic or are you using one, a separate USB maybe switch to using your computer one? Just in the settings on Zoom?
I'm not able to access the settings at all, so.
It does seem to be better when you're leaning in.
Oh, let's see, um.
I thi- I, I think it is actually set to your laptop, maybe. Cause we're, the angle is.
By chance? Is that any better?
Yes.
Okay, I changed it. Um. We're looking to move the plan forward for adoption and then um hold a study session with the city council. To uh provide an educational overview of the strategic housing plan and begin discussions on plan implementation. So with that, I'll conclude our presentation um and we're here to answer any questions and open it up for discussion.
Thank you. All right, and so we will go ahead and transition over to public input first. And then after we've taken uh the opportunity to hear public questions and concerns. Then what we'll do is we'll make a round um the rounds through council questions and comments. So at this point in the meeting, we'll go ahead and invite the public to uh make comment on this specific topic. This is on the agenda item tonight, the strategic housing plan. Um, for anybody that may have called in wanting to give public comment on the different topics. We will be hearing general public comment again on January eighth at the next regular business meeting. Of course, you can always send emails, letters um to us in the meantime, but tonight we're here to listen specifically. And discuss the strategic housing study. I will take a quick note to the um mention that there were four comments on Lakewood speaks.org tonight. Or um, this is the electronic way that residents can send feedback, um questions and, and comments through there. And for those of you that are listening tonight that would like to take a deeper dive, we did get a nice presentation from staff. But there are a lot more details that are also available on Lakewood speaks.org. We've got a full staff memo that gives more information and background. Copy of the forty-four page plan itself and then the appendix that goes into all kinds of rich data. Um, so if you wish to give comments on tonight's presentation, there's a three minute time limit. Uh, we will, we are going to work to um do the Zoom timer as we have been in chambers. So um please bear with us while we get that um worked out. If, if we have any tweaks there, I do, I am prepared with the bill, so we may need to shift over, but we'll give it a chance. Um, so for anybody who would like to speak and um any of our public joining the call. Please go ahead and raise your hand or press star nine to request to speak. And we'll give everybody a minute to do that. Okay, and I've got first, um Catherine Hasford, so. Um, go ahead and spread, press star six to unmute yourself and then. Catherine, if you could identify your name and address or name and ward and then we'll get your clock started.
Um, my name is Kathy Hasfield. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Two Creeks neighborhood, Ward two. Um, having gone through this uh plan. I find it interesting that there was a meeting with Ward, with a uh group in Ward one. One and five in WCCA. I know in Two Creeks asked for um a meeting, we got a no for an answer. And we probably have the most um affordable housing and also the, the different types of housing. For um, um, Metro West, um, Archway, um. And then drug rehab, that kind of, you know, drug rehab, alcohol rehab. Um, recovery works, we have those all in Ward um two in the Two Creeks neighborhood. Um, so I think it would have been much better had uh the. Um, committee reached out to um. Other organiza- other areas besides Board five in maybe one there in Board one. Um, and WCCA was strictly a, um, I think a seven minute presentation. It was not a discussion group at all. Um. There's many things that are very interested in this. I did respond and, and wrote it out so that you could just read it. Um. Just different comments, I, I'm really concerned. Um, with the comment of picking up school property. For housing, you're going to have uh neighborhood conversations. A whole lot of those on that particular area. Um, as we have uh a two, um, well. Mulhome Elementary School, which has been closed and we're requesting. And we're working and hoping that the city would purchase it for parkland and not housing for um. At all, um. And then, you know, it, besides what I had written um and, and sent in. The comment on uh mobile home parks. That is an uh discussion area because. From what I have been receiving, the city does not send code enforcement over there. So you've got housing that have um been rebuilt. With new rooms, um, whole new sections of um trailers. And probably the electrical system runs on extension cords. The city says it's a state problem and the state said, no, it's not, that's a city problem. So I think there are, you know, conversation areas that need to be discussed before this thing is approved. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other attendees that would like to say a few words during public input period this evening? All right, and seeing no more, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And with that, I will go ahead and shift over the floor to. Uh councillor Mayat Guerrero, who chaired the Housing Policy Commission last year through the, through this process. And then we'll kick it off for other council questions, concerns after that. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Um, I do want to first really acknowledge amount of. Um, pushback that we heard from the community on the outreach process. Um, to begin with, and I think that we were able to push back the um semi-finalization, the drafting process. A bit and do some more of that outreach. And I know in particular, I heard a lot both from Iber and Two Creeks that. Um, that doing some of that last minute outreach was helpful, but that in particular, we as a city and as a council need to. Learn important lessons from this process for the comprehensive plan and for other plans. In terms of how we're both um engaging with neighborhoods and how we're engaging with the people of Lakewood on. Big plans. And so I just want to really acknowledge the amount of really thoughtful, important feedback that I got. And I think other members of the housing committee in particular got about that and to say that um. That has been elevated and talked about at length and it is, I think, a lesson that hopefully we will have learned. And I expect all of those same people to continue to be paying attention and to hold us accountable to that as we move into twenty twenty four. I also want to talk about just the nature of this plan um and really the idea that having. A complex, complex issue such as our current housing crisis. Um, it is nearly impossible for us as part-time city council people to have the. Capacity, the knowledge and the expertise to have. A really clear understanding of all of the various types of systems at work and the types of options that exist in terms of. How are we getting people housed, keeping people housed and creating more long-term like housing solutions that are sustainable? And so this. A strategic housing plan, much like the comprehensive plan, does not in itself change any specific policy. It does not change zoning, it does not create investments or budget line items um in and of itself. What it really is, and I think that the staff and the consultants also did a great job tonight of framing this up. So I just want to appreciate that. I think you all have heard some of the feedback from the housing committee on this, so thank you for that. Um, but really, you know, what it is, is it is. Um, a framework and it is guidance with some basic levels of understanding and solutions that we are then able to prioritize, think through. And get the details that we need on each one as we go. And um. You know, the comprehensive plan is this big plan that we're, you know, getting started on our next one. Um, that has aspirations for Lakewood, right? And it has values basis for Lakewood and it has advice for the future of Lakewood. But in it, it in and of itself does not complete any of those plans. And so the housing plan is sort of similar in this way. This is a super big, big issue. It is abstract. There are lots of different sort of pathways to go through. And what we have here is a concise, tangible, readable, practical guidance on how we can dig in. And steps that we can start moving on. It is not the end all be all of the data, the research or the policy understanding. That we would need to enact any of these things. Um, and so I'm really hoping that we're able to kind of keep that in mind during our discussion. I know with new people, it's like. This is a lot. Um, and we've been chewing on it for a while. Um, but I also know that in order for us to really start tackling some of these issues, we have to essentially be able to pass a plan. I encourage still feedback, I encourage the questioning, it's very important. I'm not trying to silence any of that at all. I just want to recognize that once we pass the plan, we'll be able to more easily and readily as a council and as the broader community. Really think about where are the spots here that we need more research, more time and to dig in, to give things to the committee, to give things to the LAC, to give things to staff, to like. Really untangle and really work on how it would work in Lakewood specifically. And to work with the community on what their concerns or hopes are within these topics. Um, so I just wanted to like kind of lay out a little bit of that context of how we got here. I also recognize that we're in a complicated timing, right? This is a December study session, which is not typically when we do something this juicy. Is after a big election, which is also typically not when we do something this juicy. And it is in part, again, because of the urgent nature of this issue and because. We also didn't want to end up in a place where this discussion. And then the passage of this and the prioritization of some of these possible action steps was happening with a council that was all on its way out. And so it was a really difficult thing to. Think about how to balance the timing, like the urgency with the practicality of like our new leaders. And so I just want to recognize that all of those things are hard. Happy to talk more or to answer more questions, but that's just a little bit of like bigger context of like where council and the housing committee has been out on this. And then lastly, I'll say, I think my real, my real hope is that we're able to have some feedback and questions that we can either answer here, we can get answered before it comes before council to adopt next year. But that also, we at least start to think about. Which of these things might be important for the housing committee to really dig in on and take the time to do focused outreach, focused learning, focused studying. Um, to have those more uh enactable or policy heavy. Uh, programs get started uh and that research to get started. So that's just like another component to have in people's minds. And I apologize if I'm just a little rambling this evening. I think I've caught the flu. So I'm doing my best to be very focused and I'm highly caffeinated. Um, but I, I appreciate you all. Working with me a little bit with my fever.
Thank you councillor, that was great. All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to questions, but I've got councillor Sharazai and then we'll go Labir and then Fink.
Yes, thank you mayor. Uh, thank you councillor Mayat Guerrero. Uh, as a member of the Housing Policy uh Commission this year, you know, I appreciate. The um sort of insight on what this process will look like. Cause I think there is some confusion in the community about what next steps are. And so I just would want to build on that um. Understanding that this is step one of many, there'll still be public comment, we'll still build everything out. And I've really appreciated the neighborhood associations, particularly in Ward one, who've um reached out and shared some of the things. That are pressure points for them as we start to think about what implementation would look like. I have a lot of questions, so I'll start with a few and then we can do a second round, but. I'm interested in understanding sort of, like, is this a chicken or egg? Uh, kind of experience with one A's strategy? Do we need to look at staff capacity really first before we can take any of the other steps? Because it, to me, I, it's my understanding that sort of, you know, Lakewood um. City staff does a great job, but everybody's sort of at capacity already. So I'd love to just understand, is that something that we need to look at and prioritize quickly? Um, so it's more just like a theoretical question, some specific questions, and I recognize that you may not, staff may not be able to answer them tonight is. Um, just on page fourteen, there was reference to the Public Assistance Fund. Um, maybe deriving some of its revenue from short-term rentals. And I know that September first was that um deadline for registration and just wondering if we have a sense of what that revenue. Will be from that um process. I know some of it was meant to cover the cost to run that um. Registration process, but I have to imagine there's additional revenue. And then my same thought, I know that January first is the. Um, first upcoming registration date for the vacant properties, but in rereading that ordinance. Just wondering if we had a plan on what we would be using those fees for. Um, and then my other question and I'll pause there is. And again, I recognize some of these you may not have answers for, but I read a recent article that Denver has about a seventy percent office vacancy rate. And on page twenty, we talked a little bit about adaptive use. And I'm wondering if we have a sense, it sounds like we still need to do registration on that, but. I know in Ward one, we have a tremendous amount of office parks and a lot of them are vacant and just wanted to understand if we had any sense of how much of that is vacant right now. And I'll pause there, mayor.
Why don't I start with uh, if that's right, mayor? Um. Yes. Starting with staffing, um, we have been adding over the past couple of years some staff capacity in this area. And I think we certainly have what we need to get started. Um, I think it's a, it's a conversation that'll need to continue over the next year or two as we build up some of these programs. And I'm sure there will be some conversations in the next budget or two about our capacity, but, but it's not an immediate concern. Uh, you know, in the, in the coming months. Um. In terms of vacant property ordinance, uh, yeah, that is going to be starting in the coming months. Um, but it's really designed just to cr- uh, collect enough fees to cover the cost of administration of the program. It's not going to be a revenue producer for the city. Um, and I think that was. Um, according to the, the legal constraints on, on a program like that, so we weren't able to uh. Charge significant fees and make it a revenue, certainly. Um, I don't have the vacancy numbers, maybe I will turn your other two questions over to Amy or the consultants.
Uh, can you repeat exactly the, the two questions that Travis covered most of it? Um, what are we missing?
I was interested in the short-term rentals, like September first deadline comes, so how many? Like, how, how much revenue? Then I get that may not be something that you can understand now.
I don't, I don't think that is a number we have yet of how much is coming in for short-term rentals.
Okay, I think that was it for my questions.
There is the adaptive reuse question.
Around office vacancies.
And office space, yeah.
Is that something?
Yeah, I can try and answer that. I don't specifically know within the office parks you're referring to what the vacancy rate is. That's something we could dig into if you think it's important. But I think the bigger challenge is typically, can you repurpose office space for housing at a price that is feasible and affordable? That I can give you some generalizations. Typically, it's not, but again, you'd have to really get into specifics on the buildings, where they are and so forth. And that's probably not answering your question, but
Yeah, I
typically difficult to re, it's expensive, I would say, to repurpose office buildings for residential use. And that kind of feeds into providing incentives to make better use of underutilized property, I think. So if I had to make a generalization, I'm guessing the city would probably need to be involved to some extent.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Aaron.
I uh, I think roughly the regional vacancy rate for office space, having looked at it this morning, not knowing your question uh, is sixteen percent. But Lakewood overall is probably closer to twenty-four or five percent. Don't hold me to this, but it's highly vacant as a whole. But whether you can repurpose office space depends not only on the economics, but on the floor plates and whether you can make uh, windows and plumbing and kitchens easier. So old historic office buildings are much easier to do than big floor plate. Um, suburban buildings, uh, they still need to be in location with uh, the kinds of amenities and services households prefer. So we do, we've done a lot of uh, adaptive reuse of office buildings. But, but it's a combination of physical, market, economic. And um, uh, you also need to have the, one of the challenges with office buildings and all, and with this is it's really easy if the buildings are completely vacant. But it's really a pain if there's say twenty or thirty percent vacant, because you still have all the other tenants who have rights to use the space. And it can be very expensive to get control of a building for reuse. If you still have, you could have a terrible economic performance for office space with high vacancy, but not high enough vacancy to make it easy to reuse. So those are the variables, the physical arrangements, the locational and market conditions. Uh, and how, how occupied the building is, your best reuse candidates, the occupancy is really very low, like nothing. But it's certainly worth looking at, but it's not for the faint of heart.
Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Labir, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and just want to thank the staff. I think this is a, you know, a great report, a lot of information, a lot of solid recommendations. I remember uh, in the past us doing a similar uh, sort of overview of where we were at. Uh, but we didn't, as a council, uh, request any recommendations from you. So I wish we would have done that uh, years ago. Um, so it's great seeing some, some ideas here of what we could do to, to make an impact. So I just want to thank you all for that. Um, also agree with Kathy, uh, you know, our um, our ward two, our friend in ward two, uh, you know, the more stakeholdering we can do, the better. And I think we're going to need to continue to do more of that throughout this process. So I want to thank her for those comments. Um, one thing is I just wanted to point out that I think um, you know, a, a lot of these strategies uh, I think would have broad support. I think there's a lot of good strategies in here. But I certainly wanted to point out that I think we definitely should prioritize uh, the ones that have the largest impact. Um, I think that's obvious, but I just thought I should mention it. And one of those, of course, I think would be uh, taking a look at a fund, an affordable housing fund. And I think one, one thing for me, when looking at that, I'd love to see a range of funding options for that, not just short-term rental um, fee or tax or whatever that is. Um, but a sort of a range of options, you know, whether it's taper, whether it's, you know, motel fees, whether it's marijuana funding, you know, whatever we have as a tool uh, for that fund, I think we should really just take a look at the, the sort of range of options. I don't know, bonds to get a jumpstart at C O P, any, anything really. Um, so I wanted to mention that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to uh, mention is just that, that, you know, towards the very end of the report, it does talk a little bit about how you know, creating below-market housing for a small portion of households will not significantly affect the overall housing affordability. And, and then it goes on to talk about, you know, the major issue is just supply overall. And so one thing, you know, we do talk about a sort of a fast lane for affordable housing, and I think that's a good point. I think we need that. But I think also uh, we should be considering, and I, I'm not sure if I saw it in the, in here. Um, because this is a pretty detailed uh, document. But I think we need to look at, you know, increasing permitting overall in the city. And I don't know if that looks like a third-party permitting system or, or more staffing for that, something like that. You know, I don't know what that looks like. But I think options to increase our permitting overall would, would really help to the overarching goal of increasing supply. And uh, I know Commerce City has a third-party uh, thing, I believe. So maybe taking a look at what other cities are doing in that space might be uh, another interesting thing to take a look at. And I just wanted to mention it. So, thanks.
Does anyone have any comments before we move on? I should say, any of our guest presenters responding to councillor Labir? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on. Councillor Sinek, or did you still?
Yes, yes. Um, and it was, uh, it's a great segue because um, of what Jacob just, councillor Labru just said. Um, I'm also curious about what other municipalities are doing. Um, maybe some of them have gotten a head start and more specifically, seems like I heard Wheat Ridge was starting to establish a housing fund. And I wonder if anybody, if any of the staff can address that. Um, are other municipalities just like a step ahead and doing some of this? So that was my first question. And then moving to one C. Um, I wonder if you could explain a little bit more about inclusionary housing? I've seen the term also inclusionary zoning, and I was wondering if that's kind of like multi-use, doesn't have to be within the building, it would be within the, the zone. Is inclusionary zoning like that? It doesn't have to be within every building, but it's kind of zoned for inclusionary. So those are, those are my
I'm sorry for interrupting. It's this, it's the same words meaning the same thing. No, de, inclusionary housing, inclusionary zoning, there's no difference in the concepts. They both have the notion of uh, requiring or in our suggested case, uh, which Wheat Ridge is taking a different approach that we think is not something you should follow. Uh, both concepts are the same thing, just include requiring or voluntarily uh, exchanging uh, benefits for benefits uh, below-market housing and market rate developments. But it's the same, it's the, it's different jargon for the same thing. And the other thing I would say is each place is different and I wouldn't consider yourselves behind. Uh, you've gotten uh, uh, spent a lot of time getting an information base and a strategic framework. And sometimes it's better to take your time in doing that than rushing ahead and doing something stupid. So you haven't done anything stupid and uh, you're already ahead of many other communities who don't do the kind of homework that you're uh, in due diligence and outreach that you've been engaged in and, and planning to continue. So I would not uh, I would not consider it a race, I think. But if you were racing, I, I would view it that uh, sometimes slow and steady wins the race. And you're, you're uh, you're on the, you know, you're, you're in the uh, you're in the meat. So I wouldn't worry about where you are relative to others. You're doing just fine. And we can say that because we worked for number of other communities who've not, I think, been as um, uh, careful in researching and outreach. And I think in the end, that will allow you to get to where you want to go maybe faster than uh, even though if it takes a while to, from your point of view to get, you know, really going, I think you'll, you'll end, you'll end up where you want to be and with a lot less drama and more efficient in the end.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have at this time.
Okay, so we'll then go to councillor Cruz and councillor Lowe and then councillor Ryan.
Thanks so much for the super helpful presentation and also as somebody who has kind of seen this plan evolve from the first time y'all posted it as when I was a community member, I just really appreciate and see reflected a lot of the comments and questions and concerns that community members have raised throughout the process. So I'm just really wanted to, to flag that. I think, you know, outreach can always be better. And I do think that this is a really good example of, of learning and continuing to push, push that forward. So just wanted to say that off the bat. Um, I, much like councillor Sharzai, have a lot of questions. So I guess I'll just start off with a few um, and then maybe circle back around to some of them. Um, so one question I had relates to kind of Kathy's question on Lakewood Speaks about kind of the status of small um, lots for tiny homes. So she indicated kind of in her comment that there had been some movement on um, shrinking the size of lots and, and zoning at some point. And maybe that got lost. I just want a little bit of clarification on that because I did hear from people in the community who had tiny homes but weren't able to have them in Lakewood and thus were renting, you know, that that, that was a barrier. So just one question on kind of a little bit more about like the current status of where we are on that. Um, a second kind of question slash point of clarification kind of relates to some of the kind of things in the appendices that were brought up. One was on the inclusionary zoning um, front. Um, want to preface that I feel good about the recommendation of some of this, you know, incentives for inclusionary zoning. I do have some questions just about how we arrived at the idea that it's infeasible to have a mandatory inclusionary zoning. To me, some of the like profit margins and expected returns on the modeling of that report seemed a little bit out of sync with just some other industry profit margins and whatnot. And so I just um, don't, I just maybe want a little bit more clarification on some of those models. And also just recognize that I think potentially this, the market is stronger and, and we could potentially push that, but that's a bigger conversation. Um, and then my third question, um, and I'll, and I'll pause there. Um, I noticed that the um, the kind of reducing barriers action item, which I was really excited about. Um, a lot of the text there focuses on language access. Um, and uh, I wonder um, if it could, would be possible to potentially um, call out increasing kind of language access in some of our, our housing navigation um, as part of that um, recommendation. So I will stop there with my questions. Thank you for answering them.
Why don't I take the first one on the small lot and then I'll turn over I Z and language access to the consultants and Amy? In terms of small lot access, yeah, that, that was a discussion that started back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen as part of the development dialogue process. Um, that committee that existed at the time did look into that issue. We, we did a lot of research. We created a draft code. Um, but it never made it out of that committee, didn't, didn't go to the full council at the time. Um, our planning commission did recently relook at that issue in conjunction with some other things like A D U and, and housing issues. Um, and they um, found a lot to like about it, but also didn't send it directly on with a recommendation to council, instead recommending that, that we continue that discussion as part of our upcoming conference of plan and rezoning process. So I expect that that's a conversation that will continue over twenty, throughout twenty twenty four as part of that comp plan process and that you will see um, an answer to that in um, the zoning, you know, the zoning changes that come out of that conflict process. And then I'll turn over inclusionary zoning to our consultants.
Yeah, so the first thing I would say, because we get asked this question a lot, is that there's really not a great example of a community in metro Denver that has actually implemented inclusionary zoning and had units built under their program. Uh, Denver is obviously the nearest and most recent example. And they keep delaying the timeline to get your human, units permitted before you become subject to the requirement, you know, to build ten to twelve percent of units. So the reason I mentioned that is the comparison of before and after is quite dramatic as in I'm not making this up, forty thousand apartments planned or proposed to eight hundred. Um, as far as what a reasonable profit margin is to make that conclusion that it's not likely to be feasible. That's partly why you see in the list of interviews, we talked with private developers, even the housing authority. Um, because every housing project, even if it's a tax credit project, has to pay a mortgage and development fee and all that stuff. So if anything, I think what's laid out in that detailed appendix is probably um, optimistic, as in most developers might require a higher return on their investment. Um, and even under the more optimistic assumptions, again, most projects are likely to be infeasible. It doesn't mean you won't find a project here or there. But I think as we put in the plan, I think the best policy is um, if you're going to have anything that has to do with inclusionary zoning or inclusionary housing, whatever you refer to it as, the end goal should be getting units built. And I think in Lakewood's circumstance, if you just make up a requirement, you're going to see a dramatic decline in the amount of housing you have built in the future. So that's kind of counterproductive to a lot of the other goals you should be working towards. So it doesn't mean you can't do it, but I think you need to be somewhat lenient as in you don't have a creed that says you need to give us X and you get nothing in return, because you're going to see most people abandon their projects and go elsewhere where they don't, inclusionary zone.
And, and, and this, this is Aaron. I think all of that's true and I'm biased because Andy knows, I think Andy knows what he's talking about. I would tell you uh, real estate's more capital intensive than other industries. It has more risks than industries. Uh, and it has risk both in terms of political risk, market risk, cost risk uh, and user risk. And so uh, it's uh, not as, there are plenty of other industries that have higher profit margins and less risk. That's why it's a very difficult business to be in. And right now, even without inclusionary programs, projects across the country, both housing, industrial, you name it. All the, we have projects in literally probably nine different states in which we're working, all of which are stalled right now because they either can't get financing or the financing rates are so high, they can't make their numbers work or the costs have gone up so much. So even without um, mandating inclusionary zoning, uh, it's likely right now that their project stalled that when interest rates come back down and construction costs come back down, when, when they do, they'll start again. But uh, I have no doubt that if anything, um, this is a tough industry and the modeling we did isn't meant to predict every single uh, the behavior of every single developer or property owner. But it's, the generalizations are likely to be right more often than not. And so if you want to produce housing of any kind, don't add what is essentially a tax on it. Um, when things are not uh, uh, feasible, generally feasible even without it. So hope, hope that perspective helps.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, I, and I just wanted to uh, comment about your suggestion on including that language. Um, to include the housing navigation um, services. I think that's a fantastic idea and um, we'd like to put that into the draft. So thank you for the suggestion. I'm Blue.
Um, thank you. I, uh, I just wanted to, um, to couple of quick thoughts and then a couple of quick questions. Um, you know, I, I was, uh, well, first of all, um, having, I've, I've, I've read the, the draft that was shared with us carefully and, um, I think, I think there's a lot of really, really good content in this draft. I, I honestly don't see any point of in, in being coy about this. I, I am enthusiastically for a lot of the recommendations that are in this, um, in this report, you know, uh, I and certainly some of my colleagues, but just speaking for myself, you know, heard a lot about the, the acute need for affordable housing in Lakewood. And, you know, I, I think it's clear that a, a huge amount of outreach and engagement and, um, and thought and work has gone into this draft. And I just think there's a lot of very good, you know, actionable steps that are bold, um, that, that I think that this counselor needs to, needs to consider, um, carefully. Um, and then honestly, I'm inclined to support. Uh, and I, you know, I, I think a number of us were elected to take action on, on, on affordable housing and we're not going to do that without, um, uh, taking, I think at least some of the steps that are suggested in this report. So, um, I, I do certainly second some of what's been said. I have, I, it certainly does sound, I, I'm new, so I don't have the context that some of my other counselors on council have from the last two years, but I'm, I'm sure that we could do even more outreach and, and hear from more stakeholders. Um, but I, 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 I just want to say that I, I appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this report. And I think there's a lot of good fodder and good ideas for us to, to act on. And I hope the council will, will lean in on some of these recommendations. Um, you know, one, one other quick thing that struck me just looking at this report, uh, you know, 80% of the survey respondents are owners. Um, and, you know, the report acknowledges that that's an overrepresentation and also that, uh, that, you know, the, the, the survey respondents who have unattached, uh, single family dwellings are also overrepresented in the sample. Now, I, I think it's very impressive that we got the sample, you know, the statistically valid sample that we got. But it's worth noting, you know, 80% of respondents are, um, to the survey or renters, only 60% of Lakewood, uh, excuse me, 80% are owners of, of the respondents and only 60% of Lakewood is owners. So if anything, when we look at some of the the feedback from these 500 respondents and, and some of the support that they, that they suggest to some of these recommendations, it's worth bearing in mind that that sample overrepresents, um, homeowners and frankly overrepresents some of our more affluent constituents. And I, so, you know, I, I when you hold that up against some of the statistics that were presented at the start of this meeting about, you know, the 58% of renters are cost burdened in 2021 compared to just 39% in 2000, whereas the cost burden rate for homeowners has barely budged over that timeframe. And again, we're talking about 40% of our constituents who are renters. I do think that we have an obligation to, to look very seriously at, at action to, to help that, that population, which is so cost burdened. Um, just a couple of quick questions. Um, uh, well, one, one other quick thought. I, I do, um, uh, there's already been a couple of questions on inclusionary zoning. Um, I thought there was a lot of some good recommendations, some good content in the report on that. I do agree with Counselor Cruz that I think before we, before we're collectively totally sold on the idea that it's absolutely got to be a voluntary program, I, uh, personally would like to see a little bit more research on that point and a, a little there, it was addressed in the report, but, um, but I think, I think more could be done to sort of demonstrate that it, it really is truly infeasible from a financial perspective to get developers to set aside affordable units, um, other than by a, a set of incentives. I, I think, I think the case has not been completely made in this document, so I would like to see more on that. Um, so one or two quick questions. Um, uh, there's a lot of good content in this report. There's very little reference to proposition 123 and sort of how that fits into this larger strategy. So, um, A, I'd, I'd be curious, uh, to hear, um, you know, Mr. Parker or staff's suggestions on how Lakewood's allocation under 123 will sort of fuel and can best be prioritized to achieve some of these recommendations. Two, um, on page 50, the, uh, the, this report talks about sort of a 2% add-on to the hotel accommodation tax generating about 1.2 million annually. That sounds like a start. It does frankly sound a little bit like a, a drop or maybe several good constructive drops in the bucket relative to the need and, and what we need. So I wonder if you all have at least sort of a target or a range for what sort of size or volume you need to hit with the housing fund that's proposed to actually achieve, um, you know, to really make a dent on the, the, just the huge deficit in, in housing units that's sketched out in this report. And, and third and finally, if, if we could just, and maybe this is premature, if so, uh, i- if so, it's premature and no need to address it. But, um, just supposing that, that council were to move this forward, I wonder just tactically, like what you all sketched out some actions that you see as short-term or immediate. Would, assuming council moved this task, this, this approves this, this recommendation, could we hear a little bit more about like how, what the process would look like over the next year to actually start drafting some of these as ordinances?
Um, I'm happy to answer your, uh, Prop 123 question and how the plan, uh, fits into kind of the long-term uh, planning, uh, for the, the Prop 123 funding opportunities. Um, I think this plan doesn't speak specifically to Prop 123. I think the point of this plan is to really um, outline the options that are available. Um, to me, I, this plan comes before, uh, the Prop 123, uh, projects and implementation. What we as staff, um, really want to see is, is what, what are the priorities? Um, what does the city council think we need to be investing in? Um, where, what types of, uh, products? Uh, what, uh, types of, uh, populations and income levels really we need to be targeting? Um, once we have that information, then we can really start to, to strategically look at, um, how, uh, I guess what funding streams from Prop 123 will be able to, we can align with fulfilling those priorities. Um, so hopefully that answers your question. Um, and I think the inclusionary zoning comment, um, I understand what you're saying and I, and I think that that is among many other, uh, strategies and action steps in here, something that would be further, um, further researched and looked into and explored as we move forward. If that's something that the city council would like for us to look further into and do more research, I think that that's, um, absolutely understandable and we can do that in the, in the coming years. Um, and I apologize, there was another question that you had and I have a strange marking here that I
That's sort of the, the volume of how, how much would, would you have to do to sort of get, get a fund that was starting to make a real dent on the, the housing deficit?
Thank you. Um, I don't have, I don't have a good answer. I don't know, um, if, if Aaron or Andrew have any sort of, uh, estimate on that.
Uh, I'll, I'll The gap to build a new apartment unit at to go back to your question about Prop 123. Um, at 60% area median income is above $100,000 per unit. So the idea is not that the city itself is going to have enough funds to build your way out of 12,000 units. I mean, that would be the whole budget, but I think it's about about having sufficient resources available that increases your odds of winning Prop 123 dollars or state and federal tax credits. Cause those things go a long way when the community shows that they're, they have some skin in the game. Um, and right now, to my knowledge, the city doesn't really provide incentives even for affordable housing in a financial sense. You know, they pay all the same tap fees and and whatnot that any other project would pay. So we don't have a specific number other than if you're referring to, you know, the 12,000 unit deficit, um, it would be a huge number.
And I need to just add two things briefly. One, one of the things that's unique about this study is it's one of the few in the region or state that's actually looked at the real estate economics of housing development. Very few housing need studies actually do that. We recommended and the staff accepted the recommendation to add that to the scope of work. It was not called for. Very few from the, that are studies that follow the state's, um, uh, recommendations call for it. So one, again, to go back to an earlier question, you're already ahead of most towns because most have done it, have made policy decisions without having anywhere close to the information or analysis that you already have. Uh, there's certainly, uh, you know, you can, you can do surveys of developers, you can do surveys of communities and ask them how many inclusionary zoning ha- units have been built. I can tell you, we've worked for the city of Davis for decades. They have an inclusionary program. In 30 years, it's built a few hundred units. You're not going to build your way through inclusionary zoning uh, or through funding through the, to meet the need. What you have to do is motivate the markets to produce more affordable housing than just serving the most affluent. And that's your best, best, um, course. So I'll just stop there. The, just to point out that this is a unique study that looks at it. I'm sure you can do more. We're certainly happy to try to address any additional questions, but it's one of the few that does this. And just to amplify what Andy said, know about a tax, you know, special funding programs are going to get you at the deficit we're talking about here to is at the margin, it will help you win programs from the state and the federal governments. Uh, that's how it should be used for. You're not going to build it through your own funds, funding programs doing a large number of units. So you're going to be strategic about it. It's not going to be, um, uh, you're going to have to be like Tom Sawyer and you're going to have to offer these programs up as incentives to other government entities or nonprofit groups to put in even more money for you, but you have to give them something to encourage them to consider you rather than somebody else.
All right, we'll go on to Counselor Ryan.
Thank you very much. And especially, uh, as someone who's new to this process, I found this report very helpful to try and get up to speed, uh, on, on what's going on. And this may be a dense question and I apologize, uh, i- if it's, if it is ridiculous. If, if we as a body agreed, uh, in this study session that we should push this forward to the next city council meeting, we all uh, vote and approve it, but we don't prioritize any of these 14 different efforts. Um, what is staff to do with that? So if we just say, okay, we like, we, we, we like this, uh, framework, we like this plan, but we don't provide any direction on what our prior, what we think the priorities are. What, what's staff's next step?
Oh, actually hand that over. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Fung.
Um, I can take a shot at that. So the whole purpose of this discussion is so staff can really hear what your priorities are so that we can put a plan together. Um, it, it seems like the next best step would be to really go a layer deeper into this plan and talk specifically about those action steps. And put maybe, um, part of this is talking to other municipalities and getting a better sense for how we couple, um, partner resources together, right? For, to put together a funding source, et cetera. So that can be done through, um, either a workshop format if, um, for all of council upstairs in the cabinet room to really talk through specifically what your priorities under each of these strategies might be. You, you can send it back to the housing commission and have a smaller group if that's what you'd like and have the commission itself kind of put those priorities together and then bring it back to the full council. It's really, uh, this is really the part where you tell us what really matters to you. Where do you want us to focus? If it's just, if this ends up just being a broad conversation and we hear overwhelming support for the general, um, with a general approval of this, of this, um, plan, then you would also need to tell us, how do you want to do those next steps? Do you want to do it in a workshop format as a whole council? Do you want to send it to the housing commission? How do you want this to go? The more specific that you can be in terms of, of your priorities, the more helpful that will be for staff in terms of coming with a real deliverable for you and really getting things going.
Thank you. That, that was really helpful. I assumed we would have another study session, but I was unclear as to whether there was going to be a vote with, anyway, thank you. That was, that was helpful. With respect to those priorities, are there any of these? I counted 14, but maybe I counted wrong. The, you know, it was my understanding there'd be no math. The, uh, to quote Chevy Chase, the, i- i- are there any of these strategies that are linked together? In other words, I, someone could make an argument, well, they all work together. Um, but, you know, unlike the South Park folks, we don't have infinity dollars and so we will have to prioritize. Uh, are, are there any where you'd say, if you're going to do 1A and you're going to need to do three something or four something? Are, are there any of those that are linked together?
Yes, is the short answer. Strategy one is, um, a precursor to many of the other ones that would require financial commitments or extra staff capacity to implement. So if, as we've heard, you're in favor of a formal fast track or expedited review process for affordable housing or any housing, which would be beneficial. The reason we have that in there and Amy or Shannon can clarify is because it's likely to require some additional capacity. You know, we haven't put in a budget item for X dollars, but I think before you would create a program, you need to figure out how you're going to make good on the program. And that's when you get into the dollars and cents and so forth. Um, we haven't, we haven't mapped it all out in a complicated matrix, so to speak, but we, we put, I think in some little flags for times, timeframe and kind of impact to help guide some of those discussions, but we're not. This isn't meant to be, I think, as Amy and others have said, you know, a 12-step plan, you do one before the other and then this and then that. Uh, we tried to give our recommendations on what would be priorities and what would come first, but I know Aaron can attest to this, our advice to communities. Um, we've worked for several of them in metro Denver on the same issue as identify some easy wins, you know, get the ball rolling in the right direction. If there's stuff you think is realistic to do in the short term, start there, you know, lease brain damage. Anything on this list of 14 would be a good first step. And we just tried to put in the plan what if you had unlimited resources and time, you know, kind of here's how we would prioritize it anyways.
Maybe as the discussion goes and maybe during other work sessions, I'll understand a little bit more where, where you provide those, uh, lit, you know, we think this is the highest priority, but let me ask on the housing fund, I've, I've read that other communities, for example, uh, have gone so far as to take an ownership interest in a project. So for example, um, there might even be a bank i- i- if operating this, in the, in that sense where they, in order to get that inclusionary zoning, they might offer a developer instead of, I'm going to make up a number rather than a 10% uh, rate of, of borrowing. Um, we have a fund and we're willing to, to lend at a certain lower rate, but that we take an ownership interest. Is that something that you guys have ever looked at as to whether one, whether it makes sense or two, if it just complicates everything? If, uh, we ask for an ownership interest, if we're going to put money into a project?
Uh, I, I'll address that. Uh, and I'll, we've, um, a major part of our practice is helping large government institutions dispose of surplus And we've, a major part of our practice is helping large government institutions dispose of surplus properties or underutilized properties and including for housing uses. And typically, and we've started a program called owner profit participation or price participation. And typically it's difficult when you're talking about government properties and their reuse, they are more tricky, they're more risky. And sometimes it's hard to agree on a, on a price between the private sector and the government. So oftentimes what we've done is agreed on a base price that then had contingent participation or consideration based on performance. So if there's more units built, if the prices of the units sell for higher prices, if they sell quicker, if they rent quicker. So the short answer is we've not usually structured it as an ownership interest, but a contingent interest, because in some cases you don't really want to be an owner for a variety of reasons. But you do want to make sure that if because of your, of the government's contributions and participation, they get more than a, than an adequate return. If they get a windfall return, you want to recapture some of that so that you can use the money for future good deeds. So it is done. It's typically done on land deals or on adaptive reuses where there's a, a lower price than maybe some would, the government side would think is appropriate, but you want to get it done and it's uncertain. So that, that's, that's what we've seen more often than a direct ownership stake. The times the governments have had ownership stakes are usually when they control the property. And, and for examples, it was controversial apparently earlier, but schools have been known to keep their school properties for faculty or staff and rent the units or sell the units below, below markets. And they, when the teacher, student or faculty member leaves, staff member leaves, it's resold within the school system. So that would be an example of an owner, the government keeping ownership. Rarely do you have it where it's a private sector that's selling or could sell the building or sell the units where you keep an, an actual ownership. It's usually a right to extra consideration. But it's a very complicated subject. We've done more of these than many. And what I've learned is the simpler you can keep it, the better it is. Cause even the simpler deals are complex.
No, I can appreciate that. And, and maybe it was just my, my wording, but my thought was if you have an equity interest so that assuming the project is successful, there's money going into, for example, the housing fund to help replenish the housing fund and maybe build on that for the next project.
Yeah, I think it's exactly, the concepts, I think, similar. Usually you don't actually have to have an ownership interest, which entails certain risks and liabilities. You just get a stake in the performance of it. So it's basically the same thing from an economic point of view, but from a legal point of view, it's less risky. And, uh, but the short answer is the idea is yes, if you can, if projects do better so that they didn't need the level of assistance in the first place, you should get rewarded for making that happen. And then you can reuse that, that additional funds for the next project or the next, the next program. So you're definitely on the right track.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your patience with my terminology. The, I, I know there's in Colorado condos, condominiums are a difficult subject. Is there anything that the city can do in terms of ordinances to make it more attractive for someone to build condominiums in Lakewood? Or are we really beholden to whether the state takes action to, to make that more, more of a viable issue?
This was a topic, if you're recalling me, we discussed. I know Lakewood in years past had a local ordinance effectively where the state more or less copied Lakewood and was the other one, Parker, a couple of other towns to reduce, you know, the defect liability and so forth for a builder. I can just say it wasn't anything that any of the private or nonprofit developers we spoke with really zeroed in on. You've had some condos built in Lakewood, but I, until the state changes things more substantially, I'm not sure what there's left to do at this, at the local level is my, my take.
And my last question for now then is, so I know there's a number of different organizations like West Metro that are really promoting building apartments. Are there entities out there, stakeholders that, and land banks, I know were mentioned in here, that are active in Lakewood to promote a building of ownership opportunities in Lakewood?
Yes, we do have a couple of partners that, that focus specifically on homeownership products. And that would be Habitat for Humanity and Elevation Land Trust, Community Land Trust. Those are two local partners that, that are active in the Denver metro area. It's been a number of years since Habitat for Humanity has been able to do any homeownership properties in Lakewood. But it's something that we would are, would love to partner with them and, and look forward to those opportunities.
But is Elevation active in Lakewood? I, I saw that they're active generally in Denver, but I didn't see anything in Lakewood.
They don't, I don't believe that they have any properties at the moment. They, they are looking to be in Lakewood and they're currently working with Jefferson County with some of their federally funded programs. It's just difficult to find the property that, that fits in Lakewood. But they, they would love to be an active, an active partner in Lakewood as well.
Thank you. I'll, I'll hush for now and listen to some of the other comments.
Councilman Carrero, I think you had a response to Council Ryan.
Yes.
Chair of the committee.
Thank you. Just as a possible path, which again, to Ms. Hodgson's point, it's the, at, at this point, we can recommend whatever we like as a body. My recommendation as a committee chair is that we would, you know, staff will have this, this feedback and all these questions and that we'll be able to adopt the plan as a council and that then a part of that would be sending it back to the housing commission to like chew more on this with staff and probably to do like a public comment section, session and some public outreach to wrap our heads around a little bit more about sort of what's maybe in progress. What are we budgeted for? What feels like really huge barriers? We can really dig in on each of those. And then the housing committee would come back to council with either study session or council agenda, depending on what ends up being appropriate with like a memo. It's like, this is sort of the order that we would prioritize or these are the variables that we would think of and be able to say like, these are the things that we think can, we can start, staff should work on and city council can do. And these are things that we think need to have more committee time. And we could kind of put forward that recommendation just because the smaller group of a committee or commission allows for a lot more like in the weeds gritty work. And again, we could also do another round of public outreach, which I think would also benefit. So then we could have this sort of whole plan adopted, but one of those first next steps would, for the committee would be to prioritize like putting forward a more clear alongside staff and the public, a more clear kind of order, order prioritization memo for city council to be able to discuss and get feedback on. So that would be my recommendation of process. I've obviously chewed on this kind of a lot with several of the folks here, council, staff, some members of the public, Robert Smith. So, but again, if that doesn't end up feeling like the right fit for folks, I think that that's totally okay. We have a new body than we did a few months ago when we were first discussing kind of how to move and shepherd this process along. It's, it's a bear for sure.
Thank you. Okay. Well, then go to Counselor Stewart.
Thank you. Well, Counselor Ryan asked a lot of my process questions, so thank you for that. I was mainly going to just check in on, yeah, what do we need to move forward? What would be next steps? In general, I'm really, really supportive of exploring all of these options similar to council. I think it's, is really helpful for the public to know again that this is a process document and there, you know, we need to move this forward in order to get into any sort of potential ordinances, studying some of the more complex, longer term solutions. So I just want to make very, very clear that moving forward with this housing study as a roadmap for how we're going to move forward to tackle some of our housing issues in Lakewood, that moving this forward is not a decision on any singular action steps. So just want to make that really, really clear to the public. I will say I am pretty supportive of having some sort of a workshop. However, I'm super happy to defer to Counselor May I get it all as the chair of the Housing Policy Commission, and I know you guys have been really digging in on this for a while. So if that feels like a better process, I'm also very happy to support that proposition. Would be happy to do either. My only flag on sending the entire thing back to the commission is that I really, really think, like some of our consultants said, that there are a couple of very easy wins in here to really get the ball moving, that I don't necessarily feel like need to go back for so much study and would love to be able to get some things done quickly. Like I just want to point out that to be two and to be three, like Counselor Cruz mentioned, those couple of things. Council actually sent both of those over to the planning commission to be studied. So those are actually already in motion, which is pretty exciting, as are quite a few other things. I would be very, very in support of expanding internal staff capacity to specifically fast track the permitting process for affordable housing. We know that time is money and especially in a market like this with these rates and the cost of construction and things like that, that anything that we can do to lower the upfront cost of a project is going to be really beneficial and time is a huge part of that upfront cost, time for permitting. I know it is for everyone, but would love for, you know, affordable housing to get to the front of the line and get through quickly. I also am really interested in the housing fund. I think that could go in a lot of different directions and that's obviously one that would need a lot more study. But I will just say, as the current chair and who knows, but the current chair of budget and audits, would love to be able to integrate some of these things into our potential budget for the next year. And that process of budgeting, I mean, it really starts pretty soon. So would just love to have some direction in the first quarter of the year, at least of things that we may want to be investing in, in our next budget so that we can actually build those in, in our process as well. So just kind of wanted to flag that, that I would be very happy to move this whole thing forward and send it back to the Housing Policy Commission with my blessing, but just flagging those couple of things that I'd love to get a couple of things out really, really quickly. And that I would love to have some information for our finance team to be able to start putting some of these things into motion and paying for them.
Thank you, Counselor Stewart. And I've got just a couple of comments and a question for staff on the call too, before we hand it over for the second round of counselor comments and questions. First of all, thank you to all of you. I know, I mean, this was a long process, like getting the study done, but it's been an incredibly long process. I know you partnering with us as we had, I think, our first study session, either February or March of last year. We've had several meetings on Housing Policy Commission throughout the summer. And here we are back again and in, in many respects, still at the very beginning of the journey. So thank you to all of you for the role that you've played and being so consistently with us for the long haul. What I wanted to ask if, and Ms. Hodgson, maybe you want to kick this off for Mr. Parker. But as Counselor Stewart brought up a couple of things, housing has actually been very important on council's goals for multiple years. And because of that, we do have several of the things that are listed within that report that are actually already in progress. So I was curious if staff could tell us some of the things that we're working on that are, that are, you know, in here, but they are in progress now. And then before we shift over to our second round of comments.
Sure. Um, maybe Travis, you and I can do this together. As a result of this particular plan being underway for so long, staff listened carefully to what the, what council's comments were and what your priorities are coming out to be. So we've been talking to Community First, the Community First Foundation, and talking to them about entering into a donor advised fund with them and committing an amount of money at the, at the first year. So year one would be say $500,000 from the city. And it's, like I said, it's a don't, it would be a donor advised fund so that Community First would, they focus on AMI between 60 and 120% and they provide gap funding for affordable housing. And what this would be is a reimbursing fund, so it would be perpetual. It would, it would, and, and the, and we as Lakewood, I'm sorry, we as Lakewood would be able to dictate where we want these funds to be expended. And we would say certainly in the city of Lakewood for this level of income. And again, it would be perpetual. So if that go, that'll be a proposal that comes to council in the probably Q1. And if that goes well after the first year, we may, council may want to invest more money over time to have a more robust fund to help these folks who just can't get to the finish line as it relates to homeownership. So that's one project that's underway. You'll get that for approval. It feels like a really, a really nice partnership because Community First is the bank. And they, so we're, we're not a bank. Lakewood doesn't do this kind, don't typically do these kind of loans and these funds and investments. But that's what Community First does and they're well capitalized and they're offering to do this because one of their real goals is getting more people into homes through this affordable housing project. So that's one that we're real excited about. Another one that's underway is, you know, we've recently worked with Recovery Works, thanks to Amy's diligence and opened the first phase of the navigation center. Now we're talking about a partnership with the Action Center to move them to one of the schools that's been closed because of the school consolidation program. And then Lakewood would have a presence in the existing two buildings of the Action Center to complete the navigation concept and to allow for more housing for, for our homeless population. So that's another part of this plan that's underway. Nothing's final, all of this will come to council, but because we listened to you and can tell this is of high importance to you, we've got a lot of these projects underway so that we can bring them to you and be pretty close to the finish line. We're also, and finally, I would say Travis would have more information, but we're working with the building department to better expedite permitting and to change the code so it allows for some of these smaller lots, ADUs, pallet type, type of structures, et cetera. And as I understand it, that code is almost fully written and almost ready to come to council. So if, we're not just doing nothing, waiting, we're actually working diligently so that once this plan, once, once we hear your priorities, we'll be able to really move quickly from that point. So those are the projects that are just a sampling that are underway.
And I'll just add one more. It's got to hit on a lot of good things. One more thing that staff and planning commission have been working diligently on the last eight to 10 months has been looking at ADUs. Obviously, one easy way to get a lot more small scale portable units across the city is to make it a lot easier for residents to add, you know, mother mom flats or granny flats, accessory dwelling units in their homes. And so the planning commission has committed, completed their work on that. They've got. the planning commission has commit, completed their work on that. They've got uh draft language to send, some recommended draft language to send to council and council should be sending that soon.
And I I will add one more. Uh, through our community development block grant program, um whenever possible, we've been able to do it in the last, um this last uh action plan that came before council. Um, we are, have been able to start to um help support some of the affordable housing uh developments um through some of their infrastructure costs. So um just this past uh, this past session, we were able to pay for water tap fees. Um, and so we are kind of slowly trying to to dip our toes into that water. Um, whenever possible, the only issue with the community development block grant um is that we, we have to know about these developments kind of so far in advance. So um, it would be wonderful to have a little bit more of a flexible fund so that as projects come online, we can um be a little bit more uh responsive. So that's, that's definitely what we've been working on for the past couple of years.
Thank you for adding that. This is a topic that we are very happy to get new add-ons to that list. So appreciate that. Um, we'll go ahead and start our second round of councillor comments and questions, starting with councillor Labir.
Great, uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, again, I guess to answer the question from earlier was kind of um, I would just say I'm, I'm generally, you know, I'm interested in exploring all these options. Um, you know, I think as with all things, the devil's always in the details, but I think, you know, I think there's a lot of good and, you know, good stuff to take abide at and take a look at. Um. I do also agree with councillor Stewart. You know, I think if there's some sort of low hanging fruit winds, obviously, I think we should take those. Maybe fast tracking affordable housing or something, you know, some of those kind of uh um ideas that might be something uh we should just try to get done. Um, but I also happy to see this go to uh the committee or um, I think some of this obviously will probably need a workshop because it'll take all of council probably to get, get passed on some of these at some point, but um, you know, happy to see this go to committee. Um, oh, and, you know, earlier I said a comment about uh permitting and I know uh our director, Parker, and and our city manager just touched on speeding up permitting. And I just wanted to throw out the question is if you need anything from us to help you speed up permitting. And if so, uh, I just think that'd be great to, you know, send something our way. Um. You know, so I just want to throw that out there. And yeah, I don't know if you have an answer to that, but.
But right now, uh, looking at the process changes, we'll certainly let you know if uh if there problems that we can solve with more resources, but right now we're, we're trying to set up a process that that will get us there and don't have an answer for your question.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Councillor Sharazai and then councillor Cruz.
Yes, thank you, mayor. A lot of my questions have been answered, so a couple of amendments. Uh. I, I noticed on page thirty nine that it says Lakewood has more than sufficient land and redevelopment in full capacity to accommodate the minimum. So if I'm reading that correctly without interventions, you know, there's fifty eight hundred units will come about, but the likelihood that them coming about in an affordable capacity is where, where we need that intervention. And so for me, as we start to try and land this plane, I would really want to focus on uh to councillor Labir's point earlier, some of the impact um items, particularly in strategies one and two that are focused on affordable housing, creation, supply, all of those things. Uh, as a member of the Housing Policy Committee, and I, I know that those appointments might change, I would not advocate for this coming back to that committee just as a whole. I think there's another workshop that we need to have, but um, because of timing, because of elections, for all the things that were outlined earlier, like we, we owe um it to the community to get moving on this. And so I would be in favor of us sort of prioritizing and creating another workshop. And then, of course, that it seems appropriate that some of that would come back to the committee. But for that to just be the next step would be hard, I think, for us to see sort of any um action and you know, I've only been here two years, but have learned that this moves at a glacial pace, but I think that is um, there's an opportunity for us to expand that timeline. And then the only other thing I would want to highlight is just, it would be important, I think, obviously to educate the public. How many times do we hear about the glut in apartments that we have? And we consistently know that there's a five percent vacancy. And that's highlighted on page thirty five. So I would just point out to the community that we definitely want to make sure that we're maintaining and preserving uh the wonderful neighborhoods that we have established. And for those of us, particularly in the northern part of Lakewood, we are absorbing a lot of the housing um density that's coming in. And we'd want to just make sure that that is thoughtful and its approach moving forward because there is a need. You know, high levels of vacancy would indicate something otherwise, but we know that that's not the case. And then building on that further is just understanding current market rate. You know, the beautiful part about Lakewood is we have a lot of residents who've been here for a long time, but are a little out of touch of what current market rates are for rentals. And so we often hear eighteen hundred to twenty two hundred dollars in rent referred to as luxury apartments. And the reality, unfortunately, for many uh young homeowners, young renters, early career professionals, is this is market rate right now. And I think we have an opportunity to help elevate and educate the community on that. And so I just wanted to flag that.
Thank you. Councillor Cruz.
Thank you, mayor. And yeah, I just really appreciate this um thoughtful discussion and just want to echo what I think is like a general sentiment that I'm hearing from a lot of my fellow councillors that you know, whether some of us have been here for a while or those of us are new, have been hearing from people in the community that so much of this had to happen yesterday. You know, and so it's really exciting to hear about um some of the things that are in the works. And also would be supportive of moving this roadmap forward um as soon as possible. And and whether um the prioritization should happen in the housing committee in a workshop. I also feel amenable to whatever other folks think on that. Um, totally makes sense that that prioritization, it might make sense to do in a smaller um group. Um, and then have kind of a larger conversation about it or in a more informal setting. So from a process perspective, um, I think that makes sense. And just wanted to echo um councillor Stewart's comments as well. Um, on, you know, maybe there can be like some prioritization on some of the stuff we might need to dig into. But if there's some stuff that's already in the works or is moving forward, I think I'm doing this, uh, the things that we have agreement on uh sooner rather than later is, is really what I feel like I've been hearing from people in, in our, in my community is super important. Um, from the perspective of um income, and I really appreciate um councillor Sharazai for bringing this up. Um, I do really think that what the data show, right, is that so much of the need in the coming years is going to be where the gaps are right now, right, which is for our lower and middle income folks. And then middle income folks in that um for sale region. Um, and so I do really think that that has to be a priority of ours. And I personally um don't know if I agree with the kind of the the, one of the footnotes or or one of the propositions in there that increasing overall supply in total, um, you know, is more effective than focusing on some of the um targeted strategies for, for lower income folks. I think that what the data have shown, right, particularly in North Lakewood, is we're absorbing a lot of the housing supply growth. And also the rents are growing here faster than in the rest of Lakewood. Um, and I think um a lot of folks are um experiencing the gentrification that is um is currently happening, particularly in our area, and just wanted to, to flag that um of, of concern. And so I personally would be supportive of that, um like footnote not being in the report. Um, but open to other folks' thoughts on that. Um, and then after kind of like the uh question, the larger like uh comments, I do have some questions, um, just to continue to add to conversation. Um, I wanted to double tap on the um mobile home parks question. Um, you know, uh, our ward has a few mobile home parks. And um I know from talking with residents, there are some thoughts, questions and concerns around the implementation of some of the laws and the status of those things. And so just wanted to maybe ask staff, I'm in response to Kathy's comment earlier. What is the status of kind of the cities dealing with mobile home parks? And and what are some of the questions you all are hoping to get answered on that front? Um, and then um the, the second question I had in kind of the eviction prevention space. I think that um the points on rental assistance is eviction presents, uh, prevention are super important. Wanted to hear a little bit more and hear if there is any need for further staff capacity in this question of what further staff are needed for this issue on um, you know, checking into and supporting tenants with the current quality of housing. Um, I think I had a lot of questions from folks in the community about, you know, if they were having warrant of habitability challenges, where they would go. I know our building, um, folks do some of that work within the community. And I'm just curious kind of from that, making sure people um you know, are in quality housing, uh, what that kind of capacity looks like. So those are my, my two questions and thank you for the information.
Um, in terms of the mobile home uh park information that we would be looking at, um, I think in general, um, we would just want to be tracking uh whatever opportunities and and state legislature is happening um to make sure that uh, that whatever uh opportunities exist, we are um communicating that with the mobile home uh tenants and and folks there that are living there. Um, to be honest, it's something that we haven't done a lot of, um, a lot of research on and it hasn't been something that's been um at the forefront of, of the work that we've, we've done internally. So I think we have a, a lot of exploration and um and probably some uh, some learning from our, our peers and other jurisdictions um within the state that have done some of this work. So I think, I think that's why we put that kind of as a, as a research topic, that we have a way to go um on how we can be most effective and serve those residents. Um, in terms of the um uh comments regarding uh policing and code enforcement, I can't speak to that. So I, I'm not going to be able to, to speak to that information. Um. And I think there, was there another question that I missed?
Maybe uh question, just to clarify my question, maybe, sorry if it was unclear. Um. Uh, for like the, I'm like quality of housing or like tenant landlord challenges. Um, like what does the staff capacity or or kind of focus look like in, in that arena specifically, less so like the, the code enforcement piece? Or maybe it is code enforcement.
I don't know, um Travis, I don't know if you have that, that answer. I
I, I really don't think we've had enough time with that or put enough thought into that yet.
Thank you.
Councillor, thanks. And then councillor Lowe.
Thank you. So yes, how affordable housing is important to all of us. And we want it, we want to care for people, make things more affordable. And um, and yet, to councillor Sharazai's point about um, not everyone that we hear in the ward, you know, says, yes, let's build. You know, uh, we have I, I, as I knocked on doors, I heard a lot, you know, let's keep Lakewood small. It's like, oh, well, that ship has already sailed, hasn't it? And uh, so we, my point is just to yes, we want to get some things implemented. However, maybe there are some other things that maybe we don't, we don't need to act on, such as zoning incentives, which would allow for greater heights of buildings. So that might, that might be more of a touchy subject. So in, in our effort to bring about affordable housing in Lakewood and to do it to help the most people, we have to tread carefully, in my opinion, for those that have been so established in Lakewood for decades upon decades. And um, so there are places that, that we can have great impact. But other places will just have to um negotiate a little bit more, I guess I would say it that way. Again, um, greater heights being an incentive is the best point I can make on that. So I support this plan. And again, I'm either way, whether it be a workshop or just the commission, the housing commission that studies it, I'm, I'm fine either way. Thanks.
Thank you. And councillor Lowe.
Thank you, mayor.
Bring us home.
Um, yeah, uh, very cognizant that, that it's getting late and I'm, and I'm still new around here. So I'll, I'll keep this super short and sweet. Although for the record, I, I find this topic sufficiently riveting that um, that I feel like I could talk about it with y'all for another five hours. But I don't want to test my uh, my veteran councillors or the council's patients or the city staff's patients for that matter. Um, two just really quick points. I just want to echo what we've already heard. Um, I, I defer to the expertise of others who've been on council a bit longer than me or, or city staff who've been at this much longer than me. Um, but I really, I really do do second, third, fourth, the sort of the desire to break off some of these things and bring them back before council in a way that we can actually vote on them in a, in a way that turns into policy and ordinance. I, of course, we need to keep the conversation open. We need to keep getting um input and uh, you know, I'm not going to speak to which, which channel I think or the sequencing makes the most sense. Um, but, but I really would like to, to have a chance to vote on, on some of these and, and see some of these move into into actual ordinance, into policy, into the budget, to councillor Stewart's uh point, thinking really strategically about which of these pieces need to be sort of prioritized to make it into the next budget cycle. I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about that. Uh, and one other point, uh, there's some great, there's a, there's a good long list of things in here. I just, and I don't think anyone's suggesting this. I wouldn't want to suggest that this is the sort of the, the full comprehensive. There are no other good recommendations that we could bring to the table on housing that aren't in this list, right? I mean, I could certainly think of other things that we might perhaps want to suggest or add that would be additive or aligned with some of the um the needs and the recommendations in this uh, in this report. Um, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of great ideas in here. Um, and perhaps with the, with, you know, myself and several of my new, my colleagues now in council. Um, but let's, let's keep the door open to, to adding additional steps. Um, given, you know, the, the growing crisis on housing affordability in our community.
Thank you. And councillor Ryan.
Uh, thank you. And tagging along with uh councillor Low's comments and a number of others. I, I would love to hear from uh councillor woman, uh, Gorrero, um, whether it does make sense to go to a working session of the city council first to see if we can't find some of those easy lifts and then send it back to housing council, the, the housing committee for uh, a more uh, to tackle some of the deeper issues. Um, so I'd love to hear um your thoughts on that because I certainly defer to you as the chair of the housing committee. And so I don't want to interfere with anything that will not make sense to you. So if I could start there.
Well, I mean, I can go ahead and kind of close this out, move the, move the discussion forward. Um, which is exactly where you're going with that. But before I do, what, did you have another question?
I, I do. And, and it go, and it's related. And that is, we've heard that there might be some easier lifts or some, some ones that we might be able to tackle uh first. And, you know, always worried about unintended consequences. I would love, before we go into, if we were to go into a working session, for example, I would love for the, the advisors and staff to weigh in on what they think might be some of those things. And some of the things that we might need to, you know, oh, be careful. Uh, i- if you tackle this one, because if you do this, there's a lot of other ramifications that maybe we haven't thought of that we should uh give more consideration um to. So tho- those are the two main things. And uh, actually, one other thing. And then I would also love to hear from the advisors and staff. Uh, with the idea of trying something small and building on it is, does it make sense to pick something where there might be more federal and state money? For example, if we're to tackle something that's focused on veterans, um, and then um, learn from that process and then be able to expand that, whatever programs that we do tackle out. and then be able to expand that, whatever programs that we do tackle out into a larger piece. So those three things, and that's all my comments.
Okay, I will, I'll start. I'm, I'm sure Kathy and Travis might have some thoughts as well. In terms of some of the, maybe the, the smaller wins or the, or the things that are kind of already in the process, I think as many of you have discussed, the expedited review process, not only is that already starting to be kind of explored and tackled internally, it's also a requirement of our Prop 123 commitment. So by January of 2027, we need to have some sort of a, a fast track review process. So luckily, staff is already starting on that now. So I think that is definitely a, a quick win. Looking at creating some of that, that, as I described, that public infrastructure program, looking at how we might be able to fund some of these gap funds that are needed for, for projects as they come online. That is also something that I, I think could be done relatively easily and, and with minimal staff. The other piece is supporting, supporting some of these ongoing programs and nonprofits, the eviction prevention. We, we have really great, strong partners in the community that are doing this. It does take staff capacity to be able to continue to partner and, and kind of be that, be the financial agent, I would say, for the, for the city of Lakewood and, and make sure we're in compliance and make sure that we're doing things correctly and reporting correctly. But with some, with some funding, we can really support those programs that are already in place. I think I, I'll just stop there and kind of open it up to other staff. But I would say tho- those are some of the quicker wins that I think that we can really kind of capitalize on some of the stuff that's already happening.
Ms. Hodgson?
Thank you. And so, yeah, I agree with you, Amy. How, here's what I would like to recommend. What if we look at this in kind of a three-pronged approach? And the first approach would be for staff to do a little more work in terms of adding the texture to what's, to these action steps, to provide more information as it relates to what's already right there, what's ready to go, what, what could be adopted very quickly, what just needs a little more work. But, but we add all that texture and pass it along then to the commission and let the commission, the Housing Policy Commission, really look at what's, what's that easy stuff? What's the green light stuff? Where's the kind of yellow light? What needs a little more work? And what's the red light? What needs a lot more work? And where do we need to do the heavy lift in terms of identifying funding, looking for more partners, et cetera? And that third piece then would be in the context of a workshop where all of council can then really put this together, have more information, really coordinated information in terms of the work that's already done, the work that's ready to go, if indeed you would support that, on the stuff that just needs a little more and we're pretty close and we can partner up and get that done. And that, again, what, what's, where's kind of the heavy lift and what do we really need to focus on? Maybe it's policy changes, maybe it's advocating to our state reps or whatever that might be, so that we have a real comprehensive conversation, but we're adding as much information as we can along the way, understanding that we want to get this done quickly. So we would want to schedule these meetings as quickly as possible. I can commit that staff can do our part with haste. We can get that done. So we could send it to the Housing Policy Commission to take a look at it. And remember that the Housing Policy Commission has been talking about this for at least a year and a half, I think, and also have received a lot of public input along the way, so they can take advantage of that information as well. And then again, I'm recommending one big workshop so that all of council can provide their feedback, ask, ask questions and feel good about the direction. And in the meantime, if there are things that we, you really want to see done, then we'll just go forward and bring those to you as they're ready and you can approve them. So that's a thought. I'm, I'm recommending a one, two, three kind of thing. What are your thoughts about that?
Councillor Beat Guerrero, your thoughts?
I think I'm curious. I, I like generally that. I think I'm curious. I was really hearing both from councillor Sharazai and from some of our new folks that maybe moving right from some of that additional information and context from staff would be enough for the full council to be set up to, to move forward and that we would maybe be able to like skip the intermediary step, given that we have, like, we'll have a lot of new committee appointments. I don't, I don't know how much the like context of the committee space will actually like be different. I think that if we have really big decisions to make, the smaller space can help for more of that like weedy discussion and like tussle and like some public input and that kind of thing. But it sounds like that's not really necessary at this point. What's more necessary, obviously, an opportunity for public comment, but also actually for the full council to really get to dig in on that in a workshop space. So I'm very, very comfortable with moving kind of straight to that along with this additional staff context that you're talking about, Ms. Hodgson. And I, I want, to me is sort of as chair, I wanted to make sure that it was clear that that feels me.
Thank you. So we have really two big, two big planes that we need to land tonight before we wrap up our meeting. First, we need to determine, and tonight's not an official vote, but it is the consensus so that we can direct staff to how do we want to move forward? And I'm, you know, looking around and listening to all the comments this evening. It sounds like we've got a fairly good appetite for passing the plan in general, which that would be the first of two questions. Can I get a consensus, yes or no? Do we want to move forward with what's necessary to adopt this plan, opening up the opportunity for us to really dig in to each of the individual action items and implementation steps? And you can just nod or shake or do the green arrow. Okay, all right. So we have consensus there to move forward with adopting the plan. Next step comes to what we, what we want those next steps to look like. And two ideas that came forth this evening. One, do we start by sending it to workshop so that we can all hash into those action items and implementation steps? And pull out, you know, as Ms. Hodgson, you mentioned the green light, maybe the green light and the yellow light item. And then the other item, you send to committee to work on those, that would be one option. Or the other would be just to send it to the committee, the committee pulls those things out and eventually we get back to workshop. Let's, I see a shaking head there. So let's look at option number one first, where we start workshop and then move on to committee. Yes. Linda, councillor Singh, councillor LeBier, is that a question or a yes? Okay, cool. All right. So it looks to me like we have our consensus then. So we will move forward, staff, if you would do whatever steps are necessary to move forward to adopting the plan as a whole with council. And then we will get a workshop scheduled to start to pull out some of these things that we think are easiest and quickest to implement and those that we want to really prioritize that may even be a little bit longer term. But get moving. All right. So we got our job done tonight. Thank you, everybody. I know we've got lots of other folks wrapping presents or shopping or doing all the fun thing, maybe ice skating at Belmar. But for those attendees that joined us this evening, staff and all of our support and all of our councillors, thank you so much for all the work that you did. This was a heavy, I, I have a printed version. This was a heavy lift. This was a big read. Look at that. We were busy this weekend. And thank you, everybody, for joining us. I wish you all a happy holiday season and we'll see everybody back on January eighth. Have a good night. Ah, this meeting is adjourned.